I'd like to call this Whately School Committee meeting to order at six forty seven. And there is one thing on the agenda is budget, budget.
Yes, so we are meeting prior to the regularly scheduled school committee meeting and public hearing because we have a change in the budget compared to last month. And last month he voted to move forward with a budget of three point eight two percent. That has changed with the change in the increase in the transportation contract. And we need to re-vote to move forward the updated budget of five point five seven percent increase over FY twenty four for the public hearing. The change is entirely from the transportation cost increase.
Right, and so we need to, so just so we know, I ran by council, you want to make sure you have all your information in the public hearing budget. If we obviously higher, you know, we leave your lead down, I imagine during this meeting, meetings to follow. But get it all out there for transparency, you suggested to have a meeting prior, vote the higher number, and you can bring that number down. Because if we brought that number up after this meeting, we'd have to repost the public hearing and do it all over again.
And we are going to have more opportunity to talk about the budget in its entirety and the transportation contract during the regular meeting.
So if we have questions about that spike, that's not this meeting, that's the regular meeting.
We're strictly looking for a motion to move forward to public hearing, a general fund budget of five point five seven percent increase over the prior year.
And then, did you, at the public hearing at the beginning of next meeting, we will go explain the whole budget to the public, allow the public to have questions. And then we will have our meeting where we'll discuss ways to bring down the budget. And in either of those parts of that meeting, you can discuss the transportation budget. You can even discuss it now if you wanted, but.
But you're saying.
So we don't.
Go with a higher number and then negotiate that. That's okay. Beth, did you hear that?
Yeah, so we, we have the opportunity to discuss strategy for transportation budget outside of this fifteen minute session.
Yes, yes.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
I want to get it all correct. The original increase was three point eight, three point eight two. And we need a motion to present a budget increase of five point five seven percent over fiscal year twenty four at the public hearing.
So moved. Second. All in favor? Aye.
Yes.
Thank you, Beth. Are we going to adjourn this meeting?
So this meeting has to adjourn, we posted it in a separate link.
Okay.
And what I'm going to do, Beth, is I'm going to throw the link right into the meeting, so anybody who's on this meeting can just click on the link. And. He's.
Okay.
For the public hearing, and that, the public hearing has to start on time, so Beth, you can take ten minutes off and call back later.
I'd like to call this Whately School Committee meeting to order at seven oh five. First thing on our, I guess it's the public hearing for proposed FY twenty five budget. And like always, we're going to turn it over to Shelley. And if you guys have, I see guys, gentlemen out in the crowd, if you have questions, if you can, go ahead, Paul.
I have a question, yeah. Could you just go around quickly and say your name?
Okay.
I'm Shelley Frida, the Director of Business Administration.
Bob Hall, School Committee.
Here's Mr. Superintendent.
Chrissy Kirkland, Principal.
And I appreciate it, School Committee.
Correct.
Nice, thank you.
And then we, and we also have Beth Riley, who is School Committee.
Hi, yes, Beth Riley.
Okay. Um, I am going to go through the updated slideshow, which has not been emailed out to anyone yet. It was just finished today. Uh, this is the fourth meeting this week, so we've been working as quickly as possible to get documents together. Um, the numbers have changed, uh, for a couple of reasons. One, uh, the overall budget number that we're going to talk about is higher than the February meeting because the school committee met at six forty five and approved, uh, moving a budget forward of five point five seven percent increase over FY twenty four to account for the additional transportation costs based on the contract that came in or the bid that came in, uh, late last week. Um, the other thing is that the line by line budget that was sent out last week, there have been some additional tweaks to that. Nothing is, the, the five point seven five is the bottom line for the general fund. Some of the grant numbers have fluctuated compared to prior meetings. Um, and I know that those five point as well. So everything that we're talking about today, all of the materials will be resent after the meeting so that everyone has the most up to date information following the public hearing. Uh, so I'm going to start by talking about how the budget is developed. Uh, and I'm going to go through this a little bit more comprehensively since we do have so many guests here tonight. Uh, typically if it were just school committee, um, and then our union reps, we would move a little bit quickly since this is the third time we're seeing this, but I'm going to go in a little bit more detail. Um, so for budget development, we, uh, start that in, uh, November, December. We move through the process with school committee in January, February, and then here we are in March at public hearing. Uh, we'll have a vote later this month to adopt. And then, uh, I couldn't find the town meeting date yet on the calendar, uh, for the town website, but that will be coming up sometime before the end of June. And throughout that.
June fourth.
June fourth, great, thank you. Um, throughout the budget process, we work to develop a needs based and student centered budget that is fiscally responsible while using a hybrid approach to addressing level services, looking at supplemental funds such as grants and revolving accounts, and also considering new needs and initiatives. Uh, level services does not translate to level funding. Uh, there's always going to be an increase at a minimum for staffing based on our contractual obligations with unions. Uh, and then also non-union or, um, individual contract staff increases as well. We're also seeing, uh, an increase in supplies and materials and the cost of labor for anything particularly related to building and facilities needs. So at level service, we're always seeing a significant increase. Uh, for Whately, that typically eats up the majority of our growth. It's usually close to or at somewhere around three percent, which makes it really challenging to consider new needs and initiatives. Uh, we often have conversations administratively or with school committee about adding positions or addressing different needs. And then before we get to this point, we do generally knock it down because the percentage point is something that is higher than we want to present to the town. So this is a big challenge in Whately, creating that balance between level services and then also improving programs. Um, or adding staffing to meet student needs. So we're going to dive right into talking about what the level service budget looks like. And this is the most significant difference from the February presentation. I'm going to go through each of these, um, but in February, level services presented at four point six five percent. And today we're looking at six point three eight percent, which is one hundred percent correlated with the increase in transportation costs. Uh, we did not add anything else to the budget since the February meeting. Uh, we've used some additional grants and supplemental funds, but the, the major line item change was to the transportation account. So in our wage increase, the first thing that I want to explain there is that that account were an ESAR adjustment. ESAR is a grant that was provided to the school during COVID. Um, that, those funds were used in fiscal year twenty four to help reduce the budget increase over FY twenty three. And while we still have them for FY twenty five and we are going to talk about using them, the first step of my process is always to add in anything that really isn't a guaranteed year to year fund. So we've added that back into the budget here, which I believe was about fifty thousand dollars, uh, that we're using in fiscal year twenty four. So the balance of that, the twenty three thousand roughly, is what the true wage increases for our staff. There's various components of that. There's a two percent COLA plus STEP, which averages three percent for a total of roughly five percent for anyone that's on a union contract. Then we have wage adjustments for non-union employees as well as individual contracts. And, uh, we also capture savings due to retirements and attrition, which Whately did have some savings. Uh, we do have one retirement of a veteran teacher. Uh, I can't remember the position she was in, school psychologist, oh, special education, you're right. Um, so we did capture savings here, uh, to make sure that, you know, that was accounted for and we're making adjustments because we do anticipate hiring. I'm so switching. Sorry, I lost my place. Oh, my. There, sorry. Um, we do anticipate hiring at a lower level for that incoming staff member to replace a special education teacher because the outgoing teacher was a veteran, had been here for quite some time and was at the top of the salary schedule. Uh, so non-wage increases total about fifty one thousand. The primary driver there is transportation. We did have a minor adjustment in facilities, grounds, contract, services, which is related to special education, and then trash removal, that's based on actual needs when we look at the prior three years of expenditures. Yes.
That one point nine one, that represents transportation thirty seven, two sixty or one point nine, was that a percentage of?
Percentage of the budget.
Of the whole budget?
Yep.
Okay, and how, how, how did that change?
Why did it change?
No, how did it, I mean, amount, it was one point, so it's one point nine one now?
I had accounted, I had accounted for only a five thousand dollar increase in the transportation contract, which was about ten percent. We are seeing an eighty percent increase in the elementary school transportation contract.
Thank you.
Which we can talk about further now while we're on the subject, or we've been going.
So we'll talk a little about transportation contracts. So we do a transportation contract every five years. We put it out to bid, um, basically in December. Um, we put up the bid in December, the bids came in and finally were open late last week. And we had one bid, um, from Gridgro Transportation. And so that bid hasn't been accepted yet. Um, it's kind of, and so we instantly have to, um, and the bid came in higher than, um, we had to just pay, as we, as Shelley just said, we put in a ten percent increase, um, and they came in overall, the whole district with a, you know, forty seven and a half percent increase. Um, the price per day per bus is still, you know, I had a short conversation with Gridgro Transportation, letting them know that you know, what the grim effect this has had, we're all going to be discussing this at public meetings and so forth. Um, you know, the basic, you know, where they said is that they need to make their adjustment, um, to keep their business going and, um, making adjustments moving forward. Um, the, the contract itself is at market value, where it's lower than our Franklin County, um, other schools in Franklin County are paying for transportation per day, um, by about. Is that, it's about.
It's only like fifty dollars a day, I think.
Yeah, fifty dollars per bus per day. So, less, so, um, and they, you know, that's, you know, Comesca, so, you know, up north and, um, Mahar, which is another company out a little bit further out that way, so, you know, Franklin County. So they are still, they're more competitive, their, their contract prior to this was very good for us. Um, and so I'm giving some defense here, but only want to be, you know, it's, while they are the only bid, they still are at market value. The problem we have is that there is no competitors in Franklin County for any of the school districts. And so there's no one to drive down the market. The market's going to continue to rise, but it's not, Gridgro is not rising faster than other bus companies, but we don't have free spirit of capitalism, why we put things out to big, because we're not getting multiple bids back. But we haven't had a second bid in probably three or four billion, three or four cycles, which is fifteen or twenty years.
But they would not, to get the Frontier business, what would their business, they would be made up of?
They, I believe, also, um, are bidding at field schools, but, um, outside of our two districts, they would be out of business. So.
So there was a market adjustment in the, in the bid that came in, which as Darius said, is still within the market, um, and slightly under. But the other big change is the structure of the contract, which is why all four elementary schools are seeing a more significant increase. Frontier was paying a higher rate in the last contract, and the elementary schools were paying a lower rate. That has been evened out so that all five schools are paying the same rate, which is why the elementary schools are seeing an eighty percent increase in their costs because we went from, you know, here, forty six thousand to eighty three thousand in a year.
So why did you think it was going to be ten?
Um, ten percent feels like a really significant increase on, on any contract. And I felt like I had a bit of a buffer built in.
We, when the New Salem contract was eleven percent increase. And so now their eleven percent increase closer, still higher than us. Uh, but that's what they settled this year, earlier in the year, the eleven percent. So, you know, we threw in ten, if it came at fifteen, it wouldn't have been, you know, been a few thousand dollars more for, you know, the budget like the size of this, so, you know.
We didn't anticipate the change in structure of the contract. That's truly the problem, not necessarily the rate increase.
So it's a five year contract for the school busing? And are they bidding today, bidding to step every year, increase?
There's a five percent COLA in years two through five, yep.
So five years ago, pre-COVID, they had a, they were able to do business much cheaper than they can right now, that's fair to say?
Yes, fuel costs were down, labor costs were down. I mean, we're, we're all feeling that personally, if not in our own businesses.
Um, and also the adjustment in the contract is there was a fuel clause, we had winners and losers. There were some years we won on that, where we saved thousands of dollars because the price of diesel was down. And then we're up rather, then the opposite when it's down. So, you know, we removed that, so there's no longer going to be fluctuations where we're up a few thousand or down a few thousand, um, from the contract.
I seem to recall from previous experience, there was, uh, some legislation to the effect that the state would pick up more of school transportation. Where, where is that now?
So regional transportation, so way back, I don't know when regional, uh, regional transportation was created, but they, they, for regional schools, the state promised to pay a hundred percent transportation. So Frontier gets money back from the state, depending on where they're funding that. They've never funded at a hundred percent, last year was the closest where they're in the ninety, ninety something percentile there. Um, right now, the governor's budget has it at, um, eighty percent reimbursement. But they're actually talking about the governor's budget, where the governor's budget, and as you guys are probably talking about that in your circles as well, usually is the conservative budget. They, um, are saying that the House may actually lower, um, may actually lower those numbers um, due to the fact that the state isn't, where she had spent twenty years inside of revenues. So, you know, I saw that in the news the other day, they, it's in the longest stretch for revenue income in, in over twenty years, so, in a downward spiral, so. The April report is the most important report, so I imagine everybody's waiting to see that. And the state legislature is going to bait, balance whatever, they're going to be funding based on whatever the April numbers are coming in for revenue moving forward. So there could be adjustment that the regional transportation is going to come down. Um, they could hit chapter seventy, they could hit the chapter ninety and all your other chapters, eight, three guys. Um, so just be, we're going to probably go into a tighter season next year.
And the transportation reimbursement, just to be a hundred percent clear, is only applies to a regional school, so not, it does not apply to any of our elementary schools.
If it regionalized, yes. That would be a small incentive, um, where you would get some eighty percent saving on your transportation.
Just to make sure I understand, you're saying that the contract is restructured so that everybody's paying the same as opposed to, what was the, the, the structure, like what?
So in the last structure, in the last contract, it was structured where Frontier carried a higher burden than the elementary schools did. So the, the to, and the price change, so the total contract price previously was three hundred and twenty nine dollars a day. Frontier was paying two hundred of that and the elementary schools was paying a hundred and twenty nine. In the new contract, it's four hundred and sixty five dollars a day. And everyone's paying their equal share of two thirty, two fifty.
Just a thought, given that the regional, Frontier Regional gets reimbursed from the state, we can't Gridgro front load Frontier and drop the towns.
And that's essentially what they did in the last contract.
And they're not wanting to do that this year.
That's not how they did it.
And is there room for negotiation with them? Sort of playing this out, I mean, like, we need them, but it sounds like based on your answer about, they also need us, correct?
Well, it's one of those, yeah, we, we need each other.
Very much.
Right, we don't have a bid, we don't have transportation because there's no, that's the problem. There's no one has eleven buses sitting in their backyard that are in driving distance with drivers to take over us. So, yes, um, so within the bid, you have to be very careful if you are going to negotiate a bid because you can't change the con.
The terms.
The terms, thank you, the terms of the bid, or else you're going to be, you're figuring here wherever.
Right, yes.
So, um, so there are reports that you can, um, discuss to reduce. Um, that can be done. That's something the school committee is going to have to decide, um, as well.
So things, things like the rate per day could be negotiated, the number of routes could be negotiated. You can't negotiate a change in the COLA. You can't negotiate to add a fuel clause back in because that might have added a different bidder if the terms were different of the contract. So basically their pricing.
Theoretically, you could add a different.
Yes, yes.
Can you guys get eleven buses somewhere?
When, when the bid was solicited in December, were the, was this framework laid out the same as last time, or?
They get to submit their numbers based on our routes. So how many buses they think that we need based on our routes and the cost.
Okay, so the structure was not laid out in the.
Not by us, no.
And principal curtain here just pointed out, so we only need two buses for the school. How many does the high school take?
Eleven.
Okay, so they're.
Two buses are running away.
So they are using more. Bus, I mean, proportionally, we're a much smaller piece of the overall pricing, but I, I'm just trying to wrap my mind.
Whately's only charged for the two buses.
But even that is still the.
And the two buses that run from Frontier to Whately are W one and W two, the same two, they're the exact same two buses that pull in front of the, you know, they run the Whately route, then they come to the elementary.
And I apologize if this is repetitive, I just want to make sure I understand it too. When they exclaim their eighty percent increase, it includes fuel, it includes cost of living and things like that, but it's that actually, the, the big spike was that everyone pays the same, like that's.
And it's, it's more per day, you know, three twenty nine and four sixty five is a significant number. It's a big change, and their business and its market value.
So the cost increased and our share of it increased, so.
It's not market value because there's no market.
Well, there, there are other companies in Franklin County that run buses, they just didn't bid on our.
Those buses have to be replaced every so often, there's a, there's a set bike span and vehicles have doubled in price in the last five years.
There is, I mean, there is a true, their true cost is up, and, you know, that's, that is true. Um, and as well as trying to bu, get bus drivers, you know, we've been, um, they've been forcing to hold on the majority of their drivers, but there are other districts that have to do double runs, especially during COVID. I think things are getting a little bit better now as the market is getting tightened up. And they're changing, you know, bus contracts around the state are going to the highest, it's one of the biggest, um, impact on budgets across the state. And so much that they're collecting information about our bus, this bus contracts this year to go to the state legislatures about, can they do something to cap growth or pass a bill to somehow regulate? Because the fact that, um, out east, you know, you get these major corporations that are, you know, doing these huge bids that you can't, you're never going to be able to get back in because nobody's ever, you're going to become the Microsoft of buses because nobody's ever going to be able to show up with forty buses to take over routes, it's just, you know, I mean, or, you know, they've done the same thing up north where they've gone, they've come together. Um, we stayed out of the north, I say the up north, but it's, you know, Greenfield, Mohawk, Gilmonde, you, um, they grouped together in their bid. They've asked us at the last time if we wanted to join them, we said no, we saved over a hundred and fifty dollars a day per bus. By sticking with the local vendor, so, you know, we have one, we're with our local vendor, um, over the years. So it's like I don't, while there is a monopoly there, I also want to be very clear, um, if they're really monopolizing it, it holds up for the cost of a lot of the hot, hot hour number.
Do we have ridership data?
Would you say rider?
Ridership data.
Ridership is actually even per bus at thirty three.
Thirty three, things are on the bus.
Yeah.
Um, Bill Smith, he was telling me, and I, please correct me if I'm wrong, that because there's no sidewalks to get to school, you have to transport the students and you have to have enough capacity on that bus for everyone on the route that goes to the school. So even if you have ten kids that ride bus, and there's fifty kids on that end of town, you have to have a bus capable carrying everyone that can get to school.
And you have to remember, because you're also talking about during snow, so as soon as you have snow banks, they have to walk on the road.
Is that correct what I said?
Yeah, it's correct. So you have to be able to, you know, and you can't cross major routes, we, we also have to have safety and common sense too. And how many students are within, within a mile of the school? You know, so maybe you'll save, you know, a couple of heads, but it's, um, it doesn't change the amount, you're not going to do one bus, one route under an hour, you can't put a first grader on a bus for over an hour, they can't hold it down.
And notice how people, but, you know, look historically, the service has been good. They were lost and it's, and we don't hear about accidents, it could be, it just don't seem to be there. Um, but that says something. Unless I'm wrong.
All right, yeah, I'm going to keep us moving. Um, so that's the level service explanation, uh, we're going to go on to talking about new requests. So school committee has discussed new requests over several meetings. Um, there were increased requests for two positions, uh, that do not exist in the building. A point five full-time equivalent math interventionist, um, which I will allow Chrissy to talk a little bit about. A one, uh, full-time equivalent instructional assistant, which will be required for a student that we already know is going to have a one-to-one in their IEP for next school year. So while that is a new request, it's really something that we can't, uh, do away with. And we also requested for, uh, six thousand dollars for field trips equity and access, which is primarily related to the nature's classroom trip and the cost of busing and more families needing a financial assistant to send their children on the trip. And then curriculum consumables is related to some of our, um, new curriculum. So we have a new math and a new English language arts curriculum that's being rolled out over the next two school years. And the curriculum consumable costs with that are increased over the previous curriculum that we were handling. So, uh, those increases there total sixty six thousand one hundred forty dollars, which would add another three point four percent to the budget. Uh, there was also discussion at the last meeting about adding a point two full-time equivalent, uh, certified occupational therapy assistant, uh, that would add another half of a percentage point. Um, that need stems from, uh, again, IEP student services that we are going to be required to provide. Uh, the administration made a recommendation that rather than add an employee position, we continue to contract out for that services with the existing contract line item. So that is not included in this budget moving forward. The, uh, four pieces at the top were supported and approved by the administration and supported by the school committee. If you want to talk about the math interventionist a little bit.
Yeah, it's fairly simple, when you look at the, the data, um, MCAST data and like district assessment data, we're, we're struggling in math kind of across the board. Um, it's it's, uh, in most schools, most larger schools, they're, they have several interventionists or small. So we have a reading interventionist, a reading specialist, but we don't have a math interventionist. Um, COVID's certainly increased our need for, um, math intervention. So that's what we're looking for.
That's the job Mrs. H used to have for a year, well, she had many roles, she was. And that was, you had her probably, right? That was a granted position. What happened to those, to that access? Because she, she would wait every year to find out if that grant came through, who's going to have a job in September.
Um, it could have been. Well, it was not anymore.
So it could have been head of one, head of one's a federal grant based on poverty level, we don't qualify anymore.
Yeah.
Um, and we'll talk a little bit about that. So we, we had some different ideas about this before the transportation problem, and so we'll bring that up at the end when we talk a little bit about, uh, recommendations and moving, moving forward.
You're going to circle back to the math interventionist and these.
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back and talk a little bit more about that because, um, originally, I guess we talked about originally when we were going to come to you on the twenty eighth and then people couldn't make it and that sort, and we just pushed off this and now, you know, we were at, um, three point.
Eight, yeah.
Three point eight, and so, um, our idea was going to deal, that was going to come to you folks and ask, can, if we take the math interventionist out into a one-year position? Because we are dealing with kind of a one, the school could use it long term, but also budget wise, we, we can see that we're going to have issues next. But also budget-wise, we, we could see that we're gonna have issues next year as well, our budget. Um, and we were talking about maybe we do kind of a COVID. Relief on that in the sense of being a one person, one-year person to come in and kind of, you know. You know, bring, put some steroids into our math, work with the students and be able to get them up to speed. Um, and pay for it out of the general budget somehow. And we were gonna talk to you guys about that. Uh, is there funds from the town to do that kind of, you know, one-term thing and reduce the overall in the budget? Now, we're at a bunch, another present and a half higher. That idea is kind of, we're, at least administratively, we don't know how that idea is gonna work because we don't know what, we don't know how much. We don't much money the town has and where you guys are fiscally, and so.
Well, you, you know what the frontier budget is for us.
With that?
You know what the frontier budget give.
I know what the frontier budget hits for you, but I don't know how much, what your revenue. So the state does an assessment. As part of the, the chapter seventy, they say you'll have more money. And so, you know, it, it, it's, we don't know, like, I didn't know, like, last year that you guys got. S O A money, a forty-five thousand dollars additional. We don't make our budget based on whether or not the state's giving you S O A or not. And you aren't gonna get S O A next year because you, you're, you're, um, you know, your enrollment is stagnant, so. We don't know those things, so we, we kind of, that's, that's kind, that's a kind of the broken part where school committee makes a budget, it makes its needs, it doesn't know. Without communication from the town, it doesn't know how bad the town is, or good the town is, you know what I mean? So, um, so anyway, that was our original. Where we left our last meeting was, was leave it in, let's have a conversation with the finance committee. Where are we, you know, how are things, you know, um, shaking out and make decisions from that? Then you got transportation put on top, which kind of ruined.
The other thing that plays into it as far as elementary school goes is we've got a big capital request. From the elementary school too, for the splitters and the electrical digits. Uh, you know, o- over the next two years, it's at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars request.
Right.
So that.
But is your, is your capital, is your capital, in other towns, the capital is separate and those, your operation budget and your capital budgets are separate. So it's not about how much the school is taking in a single year, maybe how much it's taking in a longer lifespan, so.
It, it, it's still gonna come out of general revenue as one, you know, depends on what you call capital budget or whatever it's gonna be.
But capital's a one-time expense versus if we raise our budget, it's gonna be forever.
True, but it's just. A, a lot of money going just uh, towards this building. In, in this year, when we've got a lot of other things going through the roof in other areas.
Right. I get that, I get that.
Shelley, you're involved with a daily dollars in the school expenditures?
My wife works here, but I understand that there's been um, enough fully staffed. Some people out on maternity leave, vacation, they, stuff like that, so. Is money allocated for all of those positions, the ones that maybe not be fully staffed right now?
Oh, yes.
Any savings from that to put towards next year?
Um, in the current year? Well, we do have some subs in place, right? So that would be eating up some of the money. Um, and you know, typically at the end of the year at Waitly, it's not a significant amount. Um, I don't have a dollar figure with me today.
How many?
Right now, there's one.
There's one, okay.
That doesn't mean that people aren't calling in sick or using personal time, so the building may not look like it's.
So what we do usually with end-of-year funds is that we'll, we'll roll, we'll roll it into school choice. Okay, so let's say we have ten thousand dollars at the end of the year because we didn't use our stuff on here or something, something simple, something like that. Um, those, those money is good, our E and D, we just roll into school choice, or we do an end-of-year, if something um, is broken. And it's, it's not a capital expense, it's under five thousand dollars, we may be purchasing that, you know, sometimes it's. The new cafeteria tables, I don't, we don't do that way, but other kind of small things like that.
Library furniture.
Yeah, library.
Library furniture, you know, those kinds, you know, the things that, as they break them. It is, it is, but now with, with school choice, that's changed from what it was twenty years ago where. I remember when Don Scott was here, you know, as principal, you'd get a call, you'd spend whatever in two weeks. Because you, you had to get underneath, because you, you had to run up now, there's ability for this to put the wall back um, through the following year.
It's not usually very much money. It's not like we have a teacher out and we're saving sixty thousand dollars, because that would definitely be a different conversation.
When we uh, circle back on this. App position of T E math interventionist, um, I'd be very interested. To understand what has been done internally. To satisfy this.
Can you talk about it now while we're on the?
The scores are coming down. Um, just anecdotally.
So one of the, one of the big things that it's not gonna, it's not gonna show quite yet, we're having, we're gonna have a new math curriculum. Beginning next year. Some classrooms are piloting it this year, but next year it will be for everybody. And one of the things that has always been a challenge since I've been here is that. Um, different grades use different programs, and when it comes to math, you need consistency throughout the grades. Um, in terms of structure and the language that's used um, within different math curriculums. Um, so I, I think that's gonna be very helpful. But also points to another reason why having a halftime interventionist could be. Very helpful, particularly in our implementation year next year. Um.
Because they'll be working with teachers as well as students to help teachers along with different types of units, each of them is a little bit different.
Right, um. We use our instructional assistants as much as possible to be pulling small groups of kids and, and intervening. As much as possible, um. Teachers are giving up time here, there and everywhere to try and, try and get to kids who aren't where they need to be. Um. That's sort of how we've been handling it now. We look at, we look at data, once a month I sit down with each classroom teacher. And we look at the data, we look at what's going on and we try and figure out where the needs are and. Um, put resources in that, in that area.
Observationally. Um. I have two, two granddaughters in past um, X years, um, either in or coming through. Um, and I can tell you that um, my oldest granddaughter is a freshman at Frontier. And when she was in the fifth grade here, she would get off the bus in my house almost every day. Snack time, homework. She'd do, and she would have homework at home after that. My youngest granddaughter, fifth grade, gets off the bus, snack time, what do you have for homework? I don't have any, no, I don't have any, I'm just, I did it in school. It's to the point where I think she's almost bored at times and the amount of homework. And math is a rote process. You don't do it every day, all day, or at some. Point, some kind of schedule. You're gonna lose it and. I, I, I don't know what happened to the homework, I don't know if this is a, uh, this is a state thing, so we got equity so that. You know, the kids who don't have someone at home to help them with homework, don't have to do it so that, you know, so that the. Kids who do have someone at home don't get an advantage, that's what I'm feeling. And I think a lot of people are feeling that and um. So. Will this rectify that?
Are you talking about just math?
This. The half person? F T E math interventionist is going to, is, is gonna, is gonna be the magic. Um. For to bring the math scores back up.
As an appearance.
Yeah.
I've definitely seen the value in the reading interventionist.
Yep.
Pulling a kid aside that missed something, little concept over. And it's Miss Will, is that her name? Yeah, she goes to all the classrooms and she knows, she pulls them out and gives them that little piece. As for, as a parent for the math, if a kid doesn't understand a little signal concept that that person realized. All of them will give them that concept to keep them up to speed, everyone else, that's what, you miss one little piece. The class could go right by you.
Well, and to that, to that point, a lot of little pieces got missed during that adventure we went on a few years ago. Um, I, I know. If, we can debate the issue of homework. By the way, there is homework in fifth and sixth grade. And third and fourth grade, we just defined what that was gonna look like. Um. COVID did a number on us. E L A seems to have been easier to bounce back from, as you pointed out, in math, if you missed something. It, I mean, they're building blocks in math. If you missed one down here, it's gonna catch up to you somewhere, and that's a lot of what we're seeing right now. Um, particularly, if you think about fourth and fifth grade, fourth graders. Our current fourth graders were in kindergarten when we sent them home in March and then invited them back the next year for first grade to come in. Couple of days a week, um, there, there's a lot of pieces that got missed.
All right, just sort of piggyback on that too, I, my daughter happens to be in a class with your granddaughter, I believe. And uh, I think everybody in this room went to school where you did homework. And as a parent, what I do miss about it is sort of seeing how my child is thinking and working through these processes. And I'm not sure how this factored into the decision-making process, but statistically speaking, what we're seeing in the learning sciences is there's no direct correlation. Or causation to say that homework contributes to academic achievement. I'm, you know, I'm thinking of, there's a study that came out in two thousand nine from U Cal Berkeley that looked at five, the fajillion. Studies across the state and it sort of runs counterintuitive to a lot of what you feel, right, this process of you do it, you do it, you do it, you gain mastering. It's just the evidence isn't backing that up anymore. So I think there's a bigger shift we're seeing. I would contend nationally, but I don't have the data in front of me, moving away from homework and having more of that done in the classroom. Teacher supervision and to your point, you see that moment where the child is missing something, to have an intervention. Now, I'm a, I'm a teacher myself, um, and when I see this position as being needed. The reason it seems really important to me is because uh, one of the issues when students, especially young students, uh, struggle. With a concept, um, is you can have behavioral adverse as well, and that will take away from the learning environment from everybody else in the classroom. So I think, you know, that the homework debate is, is not set, it's not settled, but. If there's a way to maximize time on learning in a classroom with a little help from someone like that, I think it's very critical, especially when the school's numbers are. Are low.
I'm. Waiting for here, everything. I didn't understand percent until I went to college. I missed it somehow, it never got to me and there's kind of, we don't even know what percent are right now, they have no concept of it, fractions, but. Given that little extra to kids to understand that they're waiting.
So let's um. Let everybody kind of marinate that thought, let Shelley kind of get through the rest of the budget, you can see where, is that the number that we're, we're sitting at at the beginning. Is that where we're at the end?
Yeah.
And then we can talk about what our next steps are.
Okay.
Okay, so.
All right, so total operating budget, um, with the new requests and level services. Uh, we are gonna use the forty thousand that remains of S R funds. And rural aid to offset the budget to bring it down to five point five seven, because if we do the math. You know, we started at six point eight, three, or three eight, I'm sorry, I'm getting tired. Um, plus three point four, you know, we're well over nine. Uh, so we needed ways to bring that number down. In order to do that, we're gonna use some supplemental funds. And this is what you picked up on, that the numbers didn't match the last one, because we changed that since the last meeting. Um, I believe S R was only in at twenty-five thousand, now it's in at forty, I think rural aid last month was only in at twenty. And now we're in at the full rural aid amount, so I will get you updated um, line by line, so that you can see all of that in there. Grants and revolving funds as well, we supplement the budget with about another four hundred, five hundred thousand almost for um, a total. Operating budget of two million, two million five hundred sixty-one thousand six hundred thirty-three dollars. I'm gonna go kind of quickly through these other pieces because it's really uh, sort of just data and a little bit of explanation about expenses. I'm not gonna read through this, but this is the function codes according to what the state says that we have to set up, there are different categories within the budget. These numbers here will correlate with what's on the line-by-line items, so you know, get, can give those a little bit more meaning of how the state defines it.
In, in the state requiring it, those are what line item, so we don't, they can choose. If, if those are all, you know, like, why did you pick, why did you put the guidance counselor here instead of here, the state requires it, where we put all those things, just so. You know that that's like, trying to be transparent within that process.
Um, some quick facts, uh, three quarters of the budget, if not more, goes directly to uh, expenses related to instruction slash teaching and learning. Whether that's supplies and materials or wages. Other expenses to operate the district total about four hundred thousand. And uh, the total budget in the line-by-line includes school-based cost and central off shared, central office shared cost. Little graphic for you of all expenditures. Salaries and wages, you can see the majority of that is going to teachers, I A's or building-based staff, such as the principal's office.
Shelley, Shelley, can I go back saying, talk about the S R funds being at forty thousand, she had that here.
I would say fifty.
Says fifty.
It does say fifty, because there's an extra ten that we're gonna use to pay out a um, employee separation cost, we have a teacher retiring. So rather than throwing it in here or asking you all for an additional ten thousand, the balance is gonna fund that.
Can you tell us what S R, I, I was on.
Um, S R is, I, I forget exactly what it stands for, especially at eight o'clock at night after a full day. But it's COVID relief funding that came federally through the state to us.
Is there any S R money left after the fifty?
It expires uh, September thirtieth of twenty-four and this is the rest of it.
Would you like to know with me?
Yes, do you have it?
Elementary and secondary schools, emergency relief.
Thank you. All right, let's go back through quickly salaries and wages and then other expenses sort of. Um, even out a little bit here, you can still, a good chunk of the pie, so you can still see is related to teaching and learning and then operations and maintenance. People's services is in green and that's where the transportation cost come in. Historical info, I did just on the fly update this, thank you for catching that. Um, but we are looking at this column here, I'm sorry, this last piece, that's five point five seven percent that we're looking to move forward. Um, enrollment history, uh, so this goes from twenty-five to twenty-two, so we're looking down at a snapshot. Um, our resident enrollment has grown and that is where Darius said earlier. Last year, the town, in F Y twenty-four, the town did see a big increase in what they received for chapter seventy funding. That S O A money was about fifty thousand-ish more than prior years because resident enrollment has grown. School choice enrollment has decreased. Overall, we're, we're growing a little bit in size. Um, but into the new year, enrollment is projected to be stagnant, which means that the town won't receive any more than the thirty dollar per pupil. Chapter seventy increase.
Shelley, at the Frontier meeting, I believe Darius said that enrollments district-wide are going down. They're turning down, but they're still still going up.
So Waitly did have a little bit of a blip. Um, I probably have another chart I could pull up or at least send to you all after the fact where you can see it. They grew nine students from twenty-three to twenty-four. The state's always a year behind on the data, so it doesn't necessarily correlate with what we're projecting for actual enrollment in the new year. Um, but there was plus nine students from twenty-three to twenty-four, um, but we're gonna probably see that start to level out at this point. Unless you have a crazy big kindergarten class coming in. Um, and we can send you grade-by-grade info as well, so that you have that.
And when resident population goes up, school choice has to go down.
Okay, and then uh, last, just to bring us back and circle back where we are altogether, just repeating the information here, so we're.
What's, is there a cap? For classrooms?
Uh, you wouldn't. We decide that um. Based on individual classes and, and the needs within that class. And everybody's class right now is, is first grade and it's got twenty, John's got a, John's got the big class. And we're gonna be graduating twelve sixth graders. Um, so it's a, it's a small class of fourteen. Um, so it's, it's smaller up that end, we're seeing, I think, um, you know more than I do. The new homes being built are attracting um, young families, so are a little heavy in the luller wing. Um, but the, the numbers coming up are, are good. We're still getting a lot of um, resident little kids in the next, in the next few years.
In the case of, sorry.
Not as much as, um, it was funny, probably my second year here, we start looking at the census, so I know the year after. A group of kids is born, how big that kindergarten class is gonna be and we kind of knew. Along with John's class, I don't know what was going on in Waitly, but there were, there were a lot of kids born that year.
So fuck yeah.
But the discretion, the discretion of the class sizes is up to Chrissy.
Sure.
And we leave that up to her for what's going on in the classroom as well. So we try to cap it at, we try to cap it at a certain thing. But Chrissy has authority of how many people.
Going up to twenty for kindergarten was it was as high as I would, I would want to go.
That might be too big. I was pulling up the grade by grade for you, although it's a little bit small up there. But this was presented as a previous meeting, at a previous meeting. So this is the projection for, um, next school year. So you can see the totals there, the class sizes, because it's just one section per grade.
So even though the discussion of the budget is later in the thing, I would recommend to you Bob, just to move it up now and have the discussion with everybody here.
Okay.
Um, just so, because if we're going to do any alterations, there's going to need to be outside support unless we're just reducing. So looking at, um, you know, Shelley, can you pull up the, the operating budget page again?
That we will. The last page.
Uh, the one just.
Do you want to?
Just a few.
Some of them.
Two of these and they're all wrong. The, um, so if we are to reduce from five point five seven, the only way to do it is to cut. So the first thing, um, you know, that we looked at is to reduce that math interventionist. I mean, it's a reality that's a new position, uh, you know, we can try to figure out how to do that in-house. Um, it is, again, it's requested by, you know, principal and such. That's a two percent, that's a two percent reduction. Is that?
I'm just asking what the percentage is.
It's not quite two percent.
Just under two percent. I'm using kind of round numbers, I guess. So it's around two percent for the math interventions. That'll bring us down to three point eight. We also can cut the pre, um, the, uh, field trip and the consumables. Chrissy can pay the consumables next year. We get a REAP grant that she's used, used in the past. I know this face to do, um, extras within the school. Um, it's kind of been her kind of to, from event days to those kind of things. We can use that money on consumables. That can bring us down to just about three point five percent. Um, to go further than that, we would have to reduce. The next step would be to either reduce programming or reduce another IA, in which we would, we would pick a classroom where the least amount of support is needed or share an IA cross-classroom, which would be that it's a, it sounds easy the way it kind of just stood out, but it's also how teachers are working together. It deals with how classes are covered when teachers are out or, you know, that kind of thing. So that team that we create each classroom, um, wouldn't be broken within the model. The model would change, but I'm just kind of throwing out the ideas of where, because immediately it's like, how do you reduce it? That's the reality of a budget, so, um, it's called basic shot, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Um, so those are the kind of the summary of the numbers I was just kind of talking about. Because immediately when we got the transportation budget, we said, well, what are we going to do? You know, um, so, or, and so we don't know where the top number is that the town would like to see or has to see. And if you even know it yet, because you're still working on your numbers coming in and that kind of thing. And so, um, the budget doesn't have to be decided tonight, as you guys know. Um, we have, we have, with a June meeting, we have months.
Um, absolutely.
And, um, but we wanted to kind of let you know that where we kind of stood.
Yep.
And that was the, that we wanted that kind of back and forth discussion.
Well, you know, we'll take this, you know, obviously we'll have, we're having another meeting on the nineteenth. We're having two more in April. And, um, we will, um, slot in both the elementary and frontier regional. And we'll go through the numbers and we'll see how it, how we can handle that. Um, it's always, you know, as well as I do, when you go down the line items, you always look for the pluses and the minuses. Where's the top end? Where's the bottom end? Back and forth. Um, personally, um, how, when you think, when there's a math issue in this school as shown by testing, is that generally like third grade and to sixth grade? Is it the whole thing? Is it fifth and sixth?
Like if I can get specific because it's MCAST data.
Just ballpark, yeah. I mean, you can see it's affecting multiple grades, you can, it's wherever you're on.
Um.
You may hurt your head.
Uh, right now, if you look at MCAST scores, which are available to anybody, um, our, our current fourth grade has the highest need for math.
Fourth grade?
Yeah.
Okay, so that may have started in the third, right? Cause it might go back before COVID, so maybe some of that stuff.
Again, those are, those are, current fourth graders were the ones that were in kindergarten when.
When COVID hit, okay.
So that, they missed a lot of foundational things.
So when you look at kindergarten, well, just look at the whole staff. How many hands-on bodies do you have working with our kids from sixth, whether, whether it's IAs or teachers in the classroom? But so you got, you got sixth grade plus kindergarten. So there's seven instructors and IAs, what, eighty-four?
IAs, there's one for class. Uh, except we're, we're down one, so fifth and sixth grader currently sharing one.
So my point is you've got fourteen people. Now you're going to bring in one half of one person. And that person is going to make all the difference in those MCAST schools. Is that what you're telling us?
Uh, I'm, I'm telling you that it's, it's part of a package of things. Like I said, we are getting new curriculum to address the inconsistency from one year to the next.
So.
Um, this would be someone.
Is going to change, it's going to include that person. There's hardware and software that's going to come in that didn't have before. And when would you project that we might see a change?
You want to know when you're going to get your money's worth?
Um. See, every time you add a body, it's hard to get that body out.
Yeah.
Well, and that's also why we talked about doing a one-year out of the budget thing. So it, it's very clear that we're not adding it to the budget. You know, and originally, you know, we talked about whether or not, I said, what we really should be doing is using ESSR money on that. Because that's what the ESSR money was for, was COVID relief. Like, you know, it was emergency COVID relief from counseling to all the things you read about in the paper. We're very effective in different schools. Um, we've used ESSR, not in that way, we've used it on, you know, from capital projects to offsetting budgets. And, you know, being a smaller school, it's what we do, or at least what we felt. So essentially, we would be using ESSR, we should have used ESSR money on something like this. Um, you know, again, can we make that move of needle without the position? Yeah, probably. It's possible. You know what I mean? Um, it's kind of, I'll use a sports analogy, because I see it many games, you know? You got a team this week, you could bring in a strength coach. Your coach could do work more on strength or a shooting coach. You know, will that make your, all your shooters better shooters? It should, but you know what I mean? But it's not necessarily, you know, certain teachers could be as strong as a math coach, uh, a math interventionist or math coach. Um, there are certain teachers who do need support, where you can try to get it other way. So that's why I'm saying we could cut it and survive. Um, but we're just being honest about what the needs are. You know what I mean? We don't want to be saying like, well, you didn't tell us about what we were trying to do. That's kind of, and I said again, this shifted slightly when we added just about two percent with transportation. It was a different conversation. You know, now we were, we're shooting around three with a little bit, you know, and change, which is not unheard of for an elementary budget going to the town.
Um, it's my understanding that the IAs, what is the educational requirements to hold that position? They're, they're not good enough teaching degrees. They're, they're very low-paid. They're keeping the professors together, so they're not specialists in any sense. But this math specialist you want to add, they can have an education.
Yeah.
They can be teachers to do this, like.
Yeah.
So it's like your thing, where you said there's fourteen people during the day. There might be six of them, but they're not teachers at all.
I, I know that. I, I, I taught for a number of years. And so I, I know what the, uh, the landscape is.
So this person would be a teacher.
I will say that, I, I just need to say, our instructional assistants are amazing.
Oh, yeah.
And provide a great deal of support. The difference would be that this is someone whose sole job would be math intervention and would not need to be, um, told how to support or where to support.
So they won't be managed internally. They, they, they will come in with their own.
No, no, I, I just mean, um, like our instructional assistants take their direction from the classroom teacher.
Right.
Um, this would be someone working with the classroom teacher, but not relying on the classroom teacher to say this is what needs to happen and what. It'd be someone with the skill set to determine that.
They'll be a teacher.
I, I just wanted to give a shout out to my IAs because they're.
Sure, they're glue, way under, way under, same at the high school, they're the glue. Yep, and I think speaking strictly for myself, not the money on finance committee, we would, I would love to be able to say to you, go with the math interventionist. You know, great, if school needs it. But we've got to go to town meeting with the budget. And we've got, as I said before, we've got big hits in Wheatley Elementary, in Frontier, in our ambulance service. And tonight they're deciding, I guess up in Greenfield, how big a hit we're going to get from Franklin Tech. And the, since they're growing, I can just imagine it's going to be among those four elements, without getting any other town operations, we're talking a quarter of a million dollars in increase. And I hate to be in the position of micromanaging the school and its personnel, but we've got to go to town meeting. And I, I would appreciate it, I think we would all appreciate it, if you would hold off on a decision until we've got a firm grasp
Oh, yeah.
on what our numbers are. Um, as I said, I would love to just say, sure, again, no, whatever for the kids, do it.
Right.
Uh, we'd love you to say that too.
Yeah, that's great. I would love to be able to, but sometimes our job is to be screwed. And, uh, you, you.
And this is a particular year where the conversation is, it's a year we have to have a conversation. We were coming in at two point seven.
Right.
You know, there's not much communication asked, you know, they have a pretty good budget and, you know, everybody's.
Right.
You know, you, you, people are critical of certain parts of it always, but you know, there's not a discussion. This is going to come in higher. And the other side is that, I guess, the communication of, you know, and it, and it's, and we do this in every, with every town, you know? And we have the same conversations when, when it's, when the budget gets above three percent, it's usually what is that?
I know you've been through Deerfield, Deerfield has worse budget squeezes than we do sometimes.
Right, well, right now, this is kind of, so the question is like, it's hard, it's a, it's a, it's a weird dance to play. Because you have, you have multiple priorities that you guys are trying to take care of. And when we go and dump the decision on you, that's not fair either. And so, and I, I just want to, I'm saying, I was like, I recognize it. It's not like we want you to cut our budget. You know, if we have to do it, but we also don't know, we don't know if, you know, if, if we go to town meeting and all of a sudden, you're putting so much of it in the savings? We could have, we could have used that, we could have come in a little bit higher this year or that kind of stuff, especially when we have a presented need, right? We, we say it's presented.
That's it, you, you, you present a need and love to be able to just say, absolutely.
Right.
Take care of it. But, but we have to challenge that need too.
Right.
So, and that's what we did here. And moving forward, we will, uh.
So let's, let's talk, go ahead.
I, I just, I wanted to circle back to the, um, because I, the, the spike in the transportation, because that just was such a shocker to me. I think you, you had said that there's still an opportunity to ask them to bid with the original structure in place, where because the high school gets reimbursement, that they get front-loaded with more cost, right? Does that seem like a futile exercise to you, or is that?
So I don't, we'd have to run by council, we'd have to run by gridco, who ran our bid, if that's legal to do.
Okay.
You know, if legal to restructure, yeah, I don't know. And so we're going to, we can ask those questions. Um, I don't know.
I'm also not sure it's legal for gridco to do that.
Okay, we can ask, but yeah, I mean, against the lawyer, yeah.
Right. Um.
It's like manipulation.
But there is only one bid.
Well, that, that's.
There is only one bid.
But again.
Multiple bids, I would say definitely that, you know, if they were the lowest bid, you can't start playing with it and stuff. But since they're the only bid, maybe.
It is, it is one of those weird things, because they're, they're doing exactly what they're supposed to do.
Yeah.
They put into a blind bid, you know what I mean? They can guess that there's maybe not the other. A few, like I get two, I think it was three, I just go, there was a competitive bid. It was nowhere near, you know, and whatever, but they don't know, you know? If, if, you know, so they have to put in what they think is the market. You know, if they come in too high or whatever, but, so there is that kind of thing. We went through that process and they followed the process rules. And so we can go back and say, Laura, they can say, no. Like, as we put together the bid, whatever, you guys put it, you guys put it out to market. You didn't just come to us and wish we can't do anyways, but it's, it's, it's a weird thing.
Just, obviously Wheatley pays for a piece of the frontier transportation budget. Um, we pay for all of our transportation. Um, just, just let's say Wheatley's share of the frontier transportation budget was a hundred dollars. And you said that state reimburses Frontier at about the ninety percent last year.
For, for riders who reside over one and a half miles from the school, not for our entire transportation.
That's a horse of a different color.
Yes.
Okay, so you, you know where I was going. What happens to the ninety bucks that Wheatley, that was reimbursed?
Well, we use it to offset the assessment. It all goes directly back into the assessment.
Uh, for the following year.
Correct. Well, no, that's not true, the current year. So the cherry sheet has a, a regional transportation reimbursement number on it for Frontier. That goes into the twenty-five budget for the, based on the governor's numbers. And we tend to be a little bit conservative on it because there's always changes. We never know if they're going to do nine C cuts. Um, but if we do get more than we budget, we have had years where we have had that happen and we apply it to the next year, because we have a stabilization fund that we can put over at just transportation reimbursement. And so I, I'm not going to say that it doesn't ever roll into E and D, but usually we do try to give it fast enough.
It's a five-year contract?
Yes.
Is there any possibility, and I understand this could be fraud, of doing a five-year contract with one year reopen or to re, see if you can restructure?
I'm not sure you can change the terms of it, because again, it could have made the package more attractive. Uh, but we know that there isn't anyone, but if there was, um, according to procurement law, I think you're changing the terms.
Those terms, so it's kind of like we're going against ourselves.
Oh, okay.
So, but also understand like, we, we haven't accepted the bid yet. So we have sixty days to accept the bid. The bid's going to be discussed at the joint meeting in April, because everybody's got to be on board. Um, I don't know if we don't accept the bid, we're in that weird spot. There is no way you can find a bus company in less than six months, but start in next school year. Um, I just, I was, there's no way. There's no way it's going to be cheaper than the bid. So that's why it's kind of like, we're in a box.
I'm not thinking it's going to be cheaper just redistributing the costs to, uh, to represent the fact that Frontier is getting subsidized by the state for its portion and the towns are not.
Yeah, great.
And they probably don't care. Perfect.
Well, that, that would actually be to our right, it's to our benefit that they don't care. As long as they end up getting the same amount in total.
Yeah, but you said they front-load somewhere else and then unload.
Now, that would hurt us on the Frontier budget, but it would hurt.
Right, but yours more, it's your percentage. You pay by percentage of Frontier, but you're paying your percentage of it.
Right.
You're getting your percentage from Frontier of the reimbursement.
Yep.
You know what I mean? It's just when Frontier was paying more than its share of the transportation contract, you know?
So when Frontier's paying more, it's getting more in state reimbursement though. So we're getting more money from outside the district when Frontier carries the cost rather than the town.
Right. But Shelley's probably right in the sense of how legal is that?
Well, if the contract's not been signed yet, can it?
But could we say, could we say we would like you to charge us double for Frontier? And at ten percent of that is going to be for our elementaries, because the state reimbursement is going to give us ninety percent. There's no way the state will. You know what I mean?
It'd be like a buy one.
Right.
Frontier and give us the elementaries for.
Charge us double for Frontier and give us elementary for free. I mean, that's essentially. Charge us double for Frontier and give us the elementary for, I mean, that's essentially, we were.
That's essentially what you've got now.
It is, yes. And that's how the.
So it's, it's not illegal now.
Well.
It may, maybe it is, I don't know. It's not illegal until we order.
More until someone.
Can I, can I, can I just ask, um, how much school of choice money came in here?
What's that? How's school choice?
Much money came in.
I'm lucky. Uh, so we're bringing in about two hundred thousand in revenue, two to two fifty, depending on the year.
When I add up what's on this line item sheet for costs that have been, that have been moved over to, uh, based to that. It tallies two sixty-one, two thirteen.
Yep.
Yep, so we're spending it all.
It's a problem we've been talking about for multiple years, we've slowly been trying to reduce expenses and, uh, had talked about next year, we were going to have to start to offload things and start with a higher level service. Uh, now we're really going to be in a bind with transportation costs and we're talking about another position, so.
And indeed, remember, Paul, if we went back, probably, it was my first or second year, so five years ago, we were in that same position where we, we got to a point where it was, it had overused its school choice to offset the budget and we had to go. I remember it was one of my first meetings, we had to go and say, we need help because we, we're going to need more than the three percent, I think you give four and a half or something like that, year in order to offset, that then puts back in, allows us to save and allows us to carry that through, so.
I will also say, of the two hundred and sixty thousand of expenses, thirty thousand of that is a special education placeholder, whether it's for an unforeseen need or transportation that we're not prepared for based on an IEP or something. This year, we're not spending that, so we'll save that thirty thousand dollars. I keep it earmarked in there year after year just to make sure we have it. So usually we end up, the last few years at least, almost covering our expenses with what we're bringing in.
I'll ask this question because of dignity, I guess, but, um, special ed scares me, okay, in a lot of ways. Um, the question is this, a family moved into town, they had an exceedingly bright student. Who needed advanced math, help, assistance. And they get, could they get an IEP? And could that IEP demand that we go to a local college and bring in somebody for that child?
No.
No?
Okay, no, it doesn't work the opposite way. You, you, IEP would identify a disability and the disability isn't being, you can't be, being too really smart isn't a disability. Everybody else in the room, I think it is, but it isn't.
Um, I know we missed the line by line item questions for Frontier, so I just wanted to throw that out if there are questions. I know it's been already, but. I did, I saw the Frontier ones, I, this week, it's not going to happen.
That's fine, you don't need it for a little bit.
I just don't want to miss it for this meeting, if there is anything pressing that somebody has a question about, because I know the line by line can look a little bit tricky. One example is principal's salary because we're funding part of that with ESAR, it looks like there's a budget reduction, it's not actually, it's just a change in funding source. And that's only because I have to, yeah, right? Well, I was, I wanted to bring till the bus news settled in before I let you know that I'm following their lead and I'm going to increase my cost by. I hope that's not going to be a problem.
I just have one question for Frontier, which is, it just struck me, psychology, phone. A thousand dollar for phone or the psychology?
So sometimes the phone bill, especially in a larger building, there's different phone lines, we break it up by department so that we can report it to DESI in that way, as a full expense for that department. There's likely also a cell phone reimbursement in there because certain staff get cell phone reimbursement for using their cell phone for work business.
I don't think it's a call you should, it goes on. But they get charged their phone, right?
Yeah, but Donna breaks down the phone by location, so like, you know, central office is broken down, there's different ones for.
Just. Okay, I will say, we did have a very bright student a few years back, we've gone through all the calculus and stuff by seventh grade. And we did a co-op with UMass, we had a student take classes at UMass while still in middle school, because we were out of math with them. So it does happen where you get people coming through and you try to, you start using different resources to try to meet those needs. So, they don't have a protected by law IEP, but the school is going to try to meet those needs when you have, you know, genius kind of things coming through.
So are we coming back the budget on the agenda, or is this our full budget conversation?
This is probably the full budget conversation, so I guess what, we should coordinate, when should, when would you like the final number decided? Within your budget process, I mean, we're, we're sitting at a number now.
You always had to have a budget ready for the Deerfield town meeting, right?
So Frontier requires us to have it ready by tomorrow, that's why there was that, that's why we had a, we had a Frontier meeting earlier tonight, to do the final voting on the budget, and they reduced it, it was going to, eleven thousand dollars saved. So, so we'll take.
Every little thing. We took care of a capital expense.
We took care of the capital, so that was a change from.
We did it in, we, the other thing that wasn't said at Frontier the other day was the nine hundred thousand dollars in interest.
On the principal.
On the principal, the principal.
Right.
That we picked up instead of putting it towards the towns because we knew things were going to be happening. So we picked that up from E and D and school choice to pay that nine hundred thousand dollars.
Couch cushions, yes.
So, i- i- we are spending our reserves to offset so the towns don't get hit, it's hard, I'm talking about Frontier right this minute. Here, we would have been fine if we didn't get one point ninety-one increase in, you know, percent, you know, almost two percent in transportation.
Right.
Yeah. And it's.
But I was trying to think of timing wise, so, so as normally after this meeting, we try to settle on a budget and we want to talk.
So when June fourth, or the?
The town meeting's June fourth.
The fourth, and the budget has to be ready sixty days before the forty-five, forty, is it forty-five?
You guys don't, towns don't have a, it's, it's when you print your warrant.
Right, that means two weeks before town meeting, technically, well, so.
So at our May meeting is when we should have our final budget.
I would, yeah, I was going, I was going to say, early May.
Yeah, so what's your next meeting?
Well, we have a meeting on the nineteenth, and then we jump into April, we have two in April, and then probably, and then we'll have more than May.
But they're usually subject matter discussions rather than the general.
Yeah.
The, the general discussion comes at the last.
Okay, great. I just wanted to comment if there was any.
No, this, this was the school meeting.
Okay, you know something, we, we do appreciate you coming here. You know, I'm not sure when the last time Paul was in the school, you know, some people, and you're here all the time, or yourself, but.
Paul's been here.
Paul's here all the time.
Maureen's here all the time.
Well, I'm talking about, I'm talking about Paul over there. Do you know Paul?
I don't know Paul.
This is Paul Newland, who was on the school committee.
Yep.
For many years, and he was our.
Select board too.
He was our state formula guru for how we got financed. And then he was, um, our selectman for twelve years. And now he's decided to.
So if he needed a state formula, he was like the one of three people in the state that.
Right, pretty much.
That was my colleague, and I'm fortunate. He's a physicist, yeah.
And you have a child who went through Waitly?
Joey, yeah. Was it my daughter's class? Oh, my oldest daughter's class, Sarah's class.
Right.
So are we keeping the next March meeting? Because that March meeting was set to vote on the budget, but we, we're not.
When is that again?
Yet. Uh.
We wouldn't need it.
We wouldn't need it.
We may want instead to have.
It's supposed to be March twenty-sixth.
We may want instead to have an April meeting.
Why are they going to tell us, right?
They have one this month and they have two meetings next month. So we, we're not going to get an answer until next month anyway, with people, right? Is that what you're saying, Paul, getting an answer on some stuff by April from you guys, before we vote on the budget?
Well, just, just understand that this is not the finance committee.
I know.
This is a group of individual citizens who showed up, who have great interests, and just happen to be on the finance committee as well, but there are two more individuals.
In general.
Um, and there are two more individuals and we will have to meet and we will have to discuss these numbers and we will have to come to a vote on them. Um, so as soon as you can get us the numbers, then we can put it to a vote and we can have it slotted into the warrant.
Okay. I, I think the, these are the numbers that you will have to work with. I don't think, these numbers won't change until they get a request from us that says.
Right.
But they have to vote on them.
Well, yeah, but as far as our conversation, our conversation, these are the numbers that we have to plug into our budget.
Correct.
And see.
So you're asking timing wise, when can we expect a response back from you?
I would say if you have an April meeting.
Okay.
April.
We will give you a cheat sheet to where, because the reason why I want to give you a cheat sheet is because we don't need the math interventionists in the budget. So we can lower the budget. Because you can pay for it outside the budget so that the budget doesn't carry that expense to the following year.
Are we still asking the towns to pay for it?
That's what I'm saying, that's where the, one thing that's complicated is that.
Because we don't have other funds.
Because if right now, we, we, right now, we can send through the five point five, right? And let's, let's just say, you guys, oh, you know what, eight millionaires just moved into town, we have the money this year. We don't really need the five point five as a, the budget, we need, we need to, we can pull out the two percent of that to, for the math interventions for a one-year position. It also controls that so that it becomes a one-year position, which I know is also on people's minds. So I want to kind of spell that out, you know, and then also, if it, if it's removed and.
So like that you all funded last year with ARPA funds, the twenty thousand of employee separation costs, it would be the same concept.
We have some ARPA funds left, they have to be spent now, except, just on JD, we've got about a hundred and thirty thousand ARPA funds left, of which we've got call for like two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand. Um, but it is possible that that kind of position that you said would be out of ESAR funds, maybe we'll find some money there. Again, I can't commit.
Right, right, and I just.
But, but it's, it's, it's another pocket.
I just want to give you guys the cheat sheet, so when you, in a month from now, when you go, what was the schools talking about again, we can give it all in one place, so we'll provide that.
That's a select board decision, not a finance committee decision, and we've been, since the money has to be appropriated before actually contracted, before the end of the year. We will need to discuss probably before town meeting, where we're going to allocate that number. And that, if you can drop Neil or Lynn Sibley, who's doing the budget side of our two-headed town administrator at the moment. Uh, a note saying, you know, just saying, putting in a request that, you know, would you consider ARPA money for that decision and put the dollar amount to it? Uh, no guarantees, but it's just something to go into the, into the pot.
Any other questions? So we're going to close the public meeting now at, public hearing at eight twenty-five. Does anybody need a quick break?
We need a quick break.
No, not tonight, I'm good, good.
So do we have to vote to cancel the next meeting then? An ad minute, no, we're just doing, okay, great.
Okay, uh, but we will need an ad minute. We're going to, we're just.
Is Beth on?
Beth, you're still with us, right?
She's the most. Says she's, she's here.
She is?
Says she's on.
It's a facility. It, it could, it could go either way either. Yeah, I think Keith would be the person.
Thank you very much for coming. Thank you. Well, I think this can be.
It's a good game of prohassid, Darius.
Yeah. The man watched it.
Oh, you watched it?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, our bigs let us down, probably my daughter and I think they had a tough game too.
What, and the net prohassid team was just, they was big, strong, fast, great. They had it all, they had it, I mean, that's so, the real question is. Bottom of the state, go to the east and beat competitors.
It's tough in Vision Four. Vision Five, if you look at it, whatever, but South Hattie's, they're playing tonight, so if they win, they'll go to the final four.
Are they playing prohassid?
I think so.
Yeah, right now.
Yeah. Well, okay.
So if they beat that, they'll go to the final four, so they are the Western Mass team.
There you go. I can't talk about.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, see you.
Hey, Beth, are you with us? Unmute and say something first. Oh, no, that was your.
So she's coming to the meeting.
You may have accidentally. Which I have done before, so yeah.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I could hear you guys the whole time, I just, my microphone wasn't working for some reason, so I had to get out and come back, sorry.
That's right, we'll, we'll go, we're going to start the regular meeting now, okay?
Okay.
Technical question, so reopened that meeting and closed it.
You, you closed the public hearing, hearing portion, so basically what you're saying to the public is you no longer can just interject.
Okay, I don't need another.
Nope.
Set of, okay.
Just be closed the public hearing portion.
I don't want Janet to be like, what did you do?
All right, let's, uh, review and prove the minutes from February sixth.
Uh, much improved.
Second. Oh, great, yeah, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Uh, financial statement.
I don't have anything for you, including a warrant total, I just realized I didn't send that to you today, which is one hundred percent on me.
That's all right, you got a lot on your plate.
Yeah, what, what else can you even think about?
I'll, I'll bring you both next month, my apologies.
That's all right. Um, what do you have for us, Chrissy?
Um, sweet, um, Hitchcock Center came in, in February to work with our fourth graders and they're working on, um, engineering design and sustainability, this is a project we've done with them over the years. Uh, and then later in the year, the fourth graders will take a field trip to Hitchcock Center to continue that work. Um, this is an interesting tidbit, on February sixteenth, this was the students' idea, we held our very first Lola Day. Um, which is sure to become an annual event. All the students made posters, cards in our project to share with her, to show her their appreciation for all that she does for us. Lola Stone, for anyone who doesn't know, has been working at Waitly Elementary School for almost thirty-five years. Her official title is Office Assistant, but in reality, she fills so many roles that a more accurate title would be too long to put on her nameplate. Lola so lovingly takes care of everyone in our school community, she is seriously dedicated to the happiness and well-being of each and every student and coworker. She was very surprised when she was called to the gym to be honored, the students were gathered in a circle as Lola made her way around to go over high fives to everyone. Some students shared things, they had written about her, and each grade delivered the things they had made for her, along with a lot of hugs, and it was a wonderful day.
She deserves it.
She really does.
That is so sweet.
She's, uh, she'll just do anything, any, every day we come in and there's going to be a hole somewhere.
Does she still take like the fifth grade or sixth grade class up to her basement, roller skate? Does she still do that?
A lot of kids go up to visit the goats.
Okay, because she used to, when my kids were there, used to go up there and go roller skating in their basement because it was like wide open and this big huge basement and they would roller skate down their basement, so.
Yeah, she's, she's amazing. And today we had a visit from Playful Engineers, this is an organization that facilitates engineering workshops in school. Our students learned about and creative chain reactions, they learned about the role that failure plays in helping to spark growth and creative problem solving. Students had a wonderful time creating group gold herd machines, the amazing materials that were provided to them. Uh, and it was just, it's one of those cool things to see, so, gym full of kids. So Jim Fullakid, bins and bins and bins filled with things to build with. And he sort of told them what their mission was, showed them an example, and then set them free. And they worked in groups or by themselves or partners, and they were just sort of all over the gym. Some built things on the bleachers and, uh, they just, they had a great time in it. There was so much to take from it in terms of working together in teams and creative problem solving and dealing with frustration. Um, some kids really get into it, and when they get to the part where you're, you're gonna set off. But a goldberg machine is kind of like the game mousetrap, remember that?
Oh, yeah.
Where you do this one thing, it lifts off this other thing, and so it's up. So they they get it all laid out. And then when they go to do it, usually it takes a few times before they get it to land and they can get their. So, um, there was just so much that was great about it. Uh, and we've done this event at night before twice, and I wanted to bring it in during the day so that all the kids can participate. We even have preschool here doing it. Um, upcoming events, we've got movie night, March twenty-second, sixth grade spaghetti supper, age twelve, six, founder, raffle, ticket sales all of April withdrawing every day in May. And a West Fun Run at the end of year to be determined.
A fun run?
Fun run.
Is that, is that, is Beth running that?
Um, Beth, I don't know.
I don't think so.
This is, uh.
I will participate, but I'm not.
Yeah, this is.
Move to nominate a split every to run it. Beth, Beth.
They did one last year as sort of a trial and run to see how it would go and, um, hoping for a, you know, an even bigger turnout.
It's a great lesson.
Yeah.
It's great.
They, you know, they, the PTO goes to the town and clears the date and because they've got to close down. They they run down to the town offices and head back.
Wow.
So, very exciting.
Nice. Ethan else?
Nope, that's it.
Any public comment? Lisa?
Yes, hi, thanks. I do have, um, public comment tonight. This is, so I'm Lisa Gaylor. I am a special educator at Deerfield Elementary. But I'm also the co-president of the Union Thirty-Eight Educators Association. So first off, I want to thank you for all that you do for your students at Waitley and for our members at Waitley. Um, so I'm talking about the school calendar that Darius is gonna be sharing with you in a few minutes, I think. And, um, basically, Darius shared with us two different versions of the school calendar. And we put both versions, um, to a vote to our members. And I just wanted to let you know what the results of our survey was. That our members, sixty percent of our members who participated in the survey. Would prefer to have the full two weeks off in December. And when you see the calendar and Darius talks about it, this will make more sense. But, um, I just wanted to make sure that you knew what our members were hoping for. So, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Okay, let's get these policies done. Uh, we're gonna vote on some policies. I'll, I'll read them off like I did every Tuesday, right? Uh, we're gonna vote on all at the same time, but I'll read them off. We're gonna vote on K C D. K H A, L B C, E A A, E H B, G B E E, J I C J. K D C, K D C B, E F C, E F D.
Uh, motion to approve said policies.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have one to remove K C B.
Uh, so moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we got those done. New business, school choice, vote.
So you're, you have to each year vote that you're going to be a school choice school. And within that, you can set parameters on where you're allowing choice to go, which classes. Um, most years we leave that discretion to the principal, but you have to, you have to officially vote to be a school choice school. And if you have any parameters on that, and then I have to submit that to the state.
I'll make a motion to be a school choice school and leave the numbers up to Chrissy and what we need in different grades.
I'll second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, a calendar.
So as Lisa just said, um, it's the first reading of the calendar, but I want you to think about it before the joint, we'll be doing at the joint meeting, because you guys really should all have the same calendar. And there are the two calendars where they differ. Um, they are based. All the other kind of things from the half days and the early releases is very similar. They're running off the development of this year's calendar. Um, however, the, um, Christmas, New Year's break is, um, could be, we usually return on the second, which is a Thursday. And other districts in Massachusetts, um, some are choosing to go a full two weeks and then coming back on the sixth. And some districts are coming back on that Thursday. I'm not making that call as a school treaty decision. So, um, you guys will be, you'll be voting that at the joint meeting and, um. We did also discuss that being prepared, I'll talk to, it carries, you know, carries your, your thirty-eight union rep. That you're gonna have to have a decision about how you're going to do a wave vote at that meeting to vote the calendar because. There are two, there are gonna be two strong, I'm hearing from people already, there's gonna be two strong sides on this. So I suggest you talk to people about it. Um, in the sense that some people feel that, um, you know, the two weeks is an opportunity. We should take advantage of that. Um, you had a really clean break in the setting those two days, um, and it was a solid break for either travel or other activities. And then the other side is that it's too long of a break and it could cause a hardship for families. So. I'm sure, we'll see if that was debated, but I'm just telling you, I'm hearing it through people talking to me, um, about it. So, you know, talk to people about it, you know, really, it's a. The community decision, what the community wants to do. But we do need to be all the same because you run a bus contract.
When, when.
John Radwick.
Well, when Lisa came on, I, I, I thought it was gonna be starting before Labor Day or starting that Wednesday.
So, well, it is a good point. So I did run the contract by both associations because in order, in your contract, we have to have permission to start before the last Wednesday in August. So they did also vote to give us that permission to start the last, you know, within what this calendar shows. Okay, so that we can come back prior to that Wednesday, and they also kept, um, usually the deal is if we come back prior, we do with that four-day weekend, that the Labor Day weekend.
And it just, if we.
I call it the administrators weekend because the administrators work for two weeks prior to opening a school.
Oh, yeah, June is a Friday.
What?
This thing, June thirteenth is a Friday. The one snow day puts us into the night.
Yeah, it's a dangerous, it's a dangerous game.
Hey, we're not done yet. Sorry.
You gotta find out what your district's doing. From exceeding.
I have, I have.
That's no day. You can see if you gotta figure out if, uh.
Uh, school committee calendar?
Same thing. Um, you have a draft that's gonna be voted. Again, we do a school committee calendar so that we can set all those dates. You obviously get meetings any time you want, but you do because you're sharing me with five or four other committees. You gotta, you gotta count that ahead of time. Uh, it's similar to this year where we stack certain ones and then we didn't during budget season.
Okay, uh, SOA plan.
So, um, the state requires that, um, I submitted SOA plan. Basically, um. In summary of what the SOA plan is really, I think the outcomes of it is probably the easiest way to do, which is the last paragraph of the whole thing. But basically, um, our measures within our SOA plan, they want to know how we're gonna spend all the money. That they're giving to us as part of the Student Opportunity Act, which is.
Four thousand dollars.
About four thousand dollars.
Last year was more.
Last year was more. Um, but so basically, um, they, when there are schools that are getting millions and they want accountability to, they're getting millions more. Um, but our four thousand dollars, we are going to, uh, make sure that, um. The, um, that we adopt high-quality instructional materials, implement them, and that's our new two new curriculums that we're doing. We folded that in, um, to this, and then monitoring. Monitoring the, the efficiency and use of those things in the classroom. Um, and then also we will measure and increase the usage of approved literacy screeners, which we've already started to do. State anyways, and then decrease attendance. No, increase.
Decrease product absence.
Decrease product, product absenteeism. And then Frontier is a couple.
That's a lot of four thousand dollars.
It's a lot, yeah.
Well, take it.
Well, actually, it's all the money that comes from chapter seventy technically, but they didn't ask for it before. Now they're kind of like, whoa, we're putting more money into schools. And so all these districts are like, really, it's, you know. A superintendent did share that she wrote on hers, I will put as much effort as to the amount of money that you gave us, you know what I mean, which is very little, so I put very little into that. But this particular one does have effort in.
Like biting the hand.
I know. Um, but anyway, so I do need you, I do need you to approve it because I have to submit that to the state that you approved by SOA.
So motion to approve the SOA plan. As discussed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, my favorite subject, composting.
I don't see Amy on the call.
Almost.
I'm just thinking like, I wish I didn't have to drive home. We're gonna sleep here and no one, no one will notice, and we're in the same green pants.
Since she, since she's not here, I mean, I really think she needs, it's hard to speak, but I know we talked briefly about it. And I thought, correct me if I was wrong, the last time that we did composting here. That the daytime custodian, I'm just, I, tell me if I'm wrong. Took it from here over to the transfer station to put it into that composting area.
Now it's a farm, right?
Yeah, a farm of wherever it was going to, they were coming and collecting it.
Okay. But they're not, they're not doing it, they're not doing it, yeah, they're not doing it, but now they want money for them to come.
No, um, we would have to, we have to get it transported.
Contract out with the trash hauler, basically that does composting.
Can you, can you give me an idea how much compost we're talking about?
She had done some calculations, and I'm, I'm panicking, searching my email here. I think it came down to fifteen hundred dollars would be the annual budget. I can read an email that she wrote.
In your SOA plan.
She could. Um, so she says other schools, Deerfield, Sunderland, and Frontier, since two thousand twelve, paid for this for composting. Does that sound right?
I think Conway does now, too.
Uh, and she's made several arguments. One in this email chat in front of me is WS will see less trash and recycling volume. Because cardboard can go in the dumpster, I think, uh, which can reduce the volumes of recycling and trash, so the dumpster is gonna be picked up less often and reduce. Uh, it can contribute to savings. Uh, that was the most recent email I received from Amy. Uh, but again, she's not here to.
What, could we, how about if we table it and invite her to our next May, or April, where we have a joint meeting?
So, well, that's the last thing on our agenda, um, is what do we, where we canceled our voting of the budget at the end of this month? We need more time.
Right.
So the next meeting that you guys are just few is May the fourteenth. Which means you have to have everything, it's gotta be voted that night because that's two weeks prior to just about town meeting.
So can I propose a motion to add a meeting in April?
Bob has tiered a call meeting anytime he wants. So that's his power. It's his superpower.
Don't abuse it.
So we could put one in.
Before or after the joint joint meeting?
That's gonna be a long meeting, yeah.
But why can't we just invite her to the May meeting when we have May?
No, we need an April meeting for the budget.
We need to talk about the budget before then, Bob.
Oh, because you're talking about the fifteen hundred dollars, so.
Well, not just, not just the fifteen hundred dollars for the compost.
Point tragically, if it's fifteen hundred dollars, we do it, run the trash line over, and we find a way to fund fifteen hundred dollars. I guess not.
Last round, was it you that said I couldn't, the town, town and.
I thought, I thought somebody came, a town person, whether it was in here or over there, came to pick up the compost. And I thought they brought it over.
Just the transfer station in the room.
Over, over to the transfer station where they have compost in there. That's where I thought it went before. I didn't know if it went to a farm.
Well, the sad thing is.
I don't want to have a meeting just for compost.
No, no, no.
We're having a meeting for the budget. Because.
Oh, my God.
We're adding, we're canceling the March twenty, we're adding an April meeting. What is your? Like lying to them, like time of child, or something in that space. I feel like I'm lying to them.
All right, all right. So we are picking a date for an April meeting to discuss the budget. We could also, if we wanted to, talk about compost, that can throw it on the agenda. Um, and as Shelley said, doesn't have to go into the budget, we probably use over that account. Um, should we invite her and have her talk to us or no? I think, I think we're leaning toward figuring out a way to compost. I don't think we have to be convinced that we have.
Okay, I don't need to be convinced.
Okay.
I don't know. Is that why she was coming? Because she thinks that I'm not in favor?
Everybody, everybody's talking about you.
She thinks you didn't want to fund it.
Yeah.
And I think when you wrote me, it was like twenty-five hundred or more because we've had a conversation.
First date I'm going to propose is Tuesday after break, the twenty-third.
I don't know if you need me there?
What's going on? Not here.
No, I'm not.
All right.
It works.
Yeah, you definitely have to be there. Hopefully.
We'll get in that morning.
Throws up on your flight like one student.
You are not.
Okay, the twenty-fourth is, I think, it goes twenty-fifth. Thursday, the twenty-fifth.
I have nothing.
Yeah, I can do it.
What time do you guys want to do it? Five, six, or seven? Four, three, two.
Early is better for me.
Nine AM, we can do a morning meeting.
Yeah, I would say five would be better for me, too.
Yeah, I think five o'clock.
Five o'clock? You like five?
Oh, and then we have Sunderland the next night and then Deerfield.
That's too much.
No, that's for me.
Yeah, we had Sunderland town meeting next night.
The next night?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then Deerfield town meeting Monday.
In April? Well, that's a lot earlier than that.
Yes, it's in their bylaws, both of them, that they have it the last Monday and the last Friday.
All right, really? Hey, Beth, is, um, is Rowan doing the Feel Like a Camp? Not the Feel Like a Camp, but Feel Like a Western Mass thing?
So Feel Like a, I don't know what that is. So I guess no. The UMass thing?
Yeah. Yeah.
Let's make a loop of that.
Um. Can I continue to discuss?
Yeah, you can keep working it.
Uh, I have nothing. Anything from the collaborative, sir?
Uh, we've not had a meeting since our last meeting, um, although there was a bit of disturbing news, an employee embezzled twenty-five thousand dollars over a couple months. It seems been fired. Uh, and the police have been involved.
What is the?
And how?
I don't know, but they, wow, it seems you're jumping as well. Twenty about that. For four months. Hey, Darius, do you have anything to say? And we're not gonna go in an executive session for, no. Okay. Motion to. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.